Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting, Wednesday, February twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five at six P. M. I call the meeting to order, and would you please all join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
City Recorder Command, a roll call, please.
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Monague?
Here.
Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Present.
Mayor Johnson?
Here. Next on tonight's agenda is the public, oh, before we, I said, here.
No, Mayor, I was gonna ask you, I had meant to ask you this before, but I would make a request that you reorder the agenda, okay?
Yes, we had to talk already, so what I'm going to do on the tonight's agenda before we get started is move item six to item four, after the, after the, before business from the public, and that's the only change I have right now, that gives L B C C time to get their report in, okay? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding the amendments to the Albany Comprehensive, Albany Council as specified, comprehensive plan is specified in planning file CP-oh-three-dash-twenty-four, the applicant is the City of Albany Community Development Commission Department. I call to order legislative public hearing at time six, four, six-oh-one. I wish, if you wish to testify, your three options, options to available, which are described in the council agenda and in the notice materials. At this time, I call on the, for a reading of the meeting procedures by the Comprehensive Planning Manager, Anne Catlin.
To test, to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to re-set issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards and review criteria in the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code, which you believe to apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
At this time, I call on staff report by Project Planner Liz Olmstead.
Good evening. Tonight before you, we have comprehensive plan amendments for file CP-oh-three-twenty-four. So, the proposed amendments we're bringing to you tonight is part of a two-phase project. Phase one is just kind of updating the comprehensive plan, adopting supporting documents, the facility and master plans, and just making sure we kind of streamline a little bit. Phase two is really the big, we're gonna redo the whole comprehensive plan, so this is kind of just a little cleanup to get ready for when we do the strategic plan, we'll align the new comprehensive plan with the strategic plan. So, after that, so we are updating, removing outdated content, making minor clarifications to existing complan, and as I said before, adopting facility and master plans and supporting documents. So, we have two criteria that we need to meet when we do comprehensive plan updates. Criterion one is that amendments are consistent with the comprehensive plan goals, policies, statewide planning goals, and adopted area plans. Goal one, citizen involvement, these amendments reflect citizen input and engagement that occurred with the master plans that planned to be adopted in the comp plan, and then we also did the normal public notice requirements. Goal two, land use planning, they incorporate the most recent and reliable information from facility and master plans. Criterion one also touches on all of the other goals that are included in the comprehensive plan, which you can see here and in your packet. And criterion two is legislative amendment is needed to meet changing conditions or new laws, and the proposed comprehensive plan text amendments are needed to ensure policies in the plan are current in accordance with the city's current needs, changing conditions, and laws. You'll also see that there are an amended motion for you, there was a few changes that were caught in the packet, so we made a few, a change to citizens to residents in chapter six, and we removed the reference to summer sounds in chapter seven.
Well, that's it? Okay. We will now be taking public testimony, if anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of their testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city recorder. I will call on those who register to speak first, followed by those who did not register to speak. Anybody signed up? If no one signed up to register to speak, was there, would anyone in chambers like to speak at this time? Okay, does any member of the audience wish to speak about the proposal, proposed amendments? Please raise your hand if you're attending in person or virtually to be called upon. If you are attending by phone, please unmute yourself to be called upon, state your name to be called upon. Please provide your name and address to, then, on the sign-in sheet in person, or email to the city recorder. Does any staffer wish to respond to any testimony presented, testimony presented? Does the council have any questions for staff? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I have some, some thoughts, and this might have been more appropriate as we came to a vote, I'm kind of on the similar, not, not these exact ones, but that are the proposed amendments, this is a huge document, and with a lot of words chosen to change, and I was gonna ask about some of them, but I think Liz highlighted that, and I'm okay with that, that we'll get a second crack at this during strategic planning, and so I'm okay to, instead of going through all my, my notes, my, my, I have an overall comment, and that's, this is huge and large, and, and maybe knowing that strategic planning's coming behind this, maybe that was the decision, but to have this, it's just one chance at it, I would love to go through some of these sections, you know, it's really a roadmap for the recent history or the long history of Albany, and it's the roadmap we want as a, as a vision, and so, so I can withhold my, my comments, you know, knowing that we'll get a second, a second crack at this, yeah.
This is a very dated document, so, you know, some of these sections haven't been changed since the nineties, so.
Wow.
Eighties.
Oh, the eighties.
So.
Yeah.
Yep. So, the, we need to keep it current because it needs to stay current when we evaluate land use applications, but the plan, as you noted, is sort of a, it's a long range and it can be visionary, and that's why we really need to start all over, but until we get to that point, it's got to be updated with more current information because we have to rely on this document and adopt those facility plans so that we can also rely on them when we're evaluating land use applications. So, we needed to do this years ago, and we're finally getting to it, but the, it will be a complete start over with the comprehensive plan and from scratch.
Okay, well, thank you, that, that kind of answers my questions, and I'll, I'll kind of withhold this until, till we have, go through strategic planning.
Thank you, my counsel. Does any other counselors have any questions or comments? Counselor Smith?
Couple of comments. I made a few notes related to things that caught my attention that I'm glad to see in there. On page one-oh-two of the packet, goal fourteen, urbanization, the section directing growth, thank you for putting that in there. I think sometimes people don't think that city staff or the council give any thought to growth, other than come on down and build up as much as you can here, and we'll worry about it later. That's not true at all, never has been true, and this is a good way of documenting that. Same way with the discussion of urban conversion plans for property that's in the, outside the city limits and in the urban growth boundary, we've had problems with that in the past, clashes with other jurisdictions as people want to develop their property, and this will, this lays out a process for making sure it's done right the first time, and people don't have multiple disappointments or whatever. The, under the discussion of the Citizen Involvement Committee on page one-forty-six, there's a bullet point number four, identify areas where there's significant pressure for land use change. Good thing to ask, good thing to look into and document, because land use changes are hard for neighbors and planners, and, and it's, it's good to let people know that that's in the plan, we're gonna deal with it, we deal with it already, but this is spelled out nicely, and, and there, there are, there are a couple of references to planning specific to North Albany, and related to traffic, and so on and so forth, glad to see that in there, and I also approve, I mean, approve, I'm, I'm glad to see the incorporation of the East Albany Plan and the South Albany Plan as part of the, the big, big mother plan here. I hadn't read through the South Albany Plan since it was adopted, and I was glad to have the opportunity to do that. I hadn't read through the entire comp plan before.
It, it's online, just looking for the comprehensive plan, it, there's a lot to it, and I think in today's era, you, you have a much more concise and strategic document, but i- if we had been reading along, like, wow, there, there's a lot of things that were recommended we do, and unfortunately, it, it sort of has been sitting on a shelf, but our goal is to, to change that in the future, so.
Create more life into it.
Yes.
I, I like the, the way we've gotten started here, and I'm looking forward to the final project, project.
Thank you.
I just want to say I appreciate the hard work that went into this, I am, I read in documents every day regarding all kinds of things, this was some dry, dry reading, but very necessary, so I thank you for that. Okay, does any other counselor have anything? I declare the public hearing closed at six-twelve P. M. Counselors would like to talk about this, any further amongst ourselves? Though, does the city council wish to discuss these amendments? I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I jumped in. Yeah, you know, now that it was brought up, I can't help but, one of my main little bits, you know, and I just, I just, like, it's under goal fourteen, urbanization, page one-oh-three, item number five is a new line that says promote infill development and redevelopment throughout the city, a- and I wanted to add something like yet, or, or also, or while, while preserving Albany's historic district character. I, I, I think that, in my mind, that flows, it's an important statement to add, I didn't want to leave tonight without saying that. But these are the kind of thoughts I have in many places throughout the.
Yeah, those are good, I mean, it's up to you, these are existing policies that we're just relocating out of, they were buried in the economic development chapter, so a lot of, some of the changes were just relocations, including these, but we do have a whole section on historic preservation, we didn't include every single element of the comprehensive plan, although there was a lot of extra in there, which I apologize, it made a very long document, but yes, we take preservation very seriously in Albany.
Oh, trust me, I know. Counselors, any, any other comments or anything? So, I want to explain a look that I got from Rebecca Bond about historic preservation when I first met her, I thought she was gonna kill me right there in that chair over there, so, yes. All right, there is an ordinance on your, for your consideration on page five of the council packet. There is a recommended motion for your consideration provided on the dais, would a city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
An ordinance, amending ordinance number four-eight-three-six, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and adopting findings.
Would a counselor like to make a motion to read the ordinance for the second time in title only?
I move we read the ordinance in, second time in title only.
Is there a second?
Question.
Oh, there's a question?
Yes, the sample motion that we have before us, is that what we're supposed to be reading?
It's up to you, I, I mean, that includes the corrections that were identified before the meeting, if you wanted to further add to that, I mean, it's, it's up to you.
I'm satisfied.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, thank you, counselors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no, thank you. Would the city, would the city council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance? Oh, excuse me, city attorney reads the ordinance the second time, would the city attorney read the ordinance second time in title only?
An ordinance, amending ordinance number four-eight-three-six, which adopted the City of Albany Comprehensive Plan by amending the Albany Comprehensive Plan and adopting findings.
Would the city council like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance?
I move that the city council adopt the ordinance to amend the Albany Comprehensive Plan with corrections to exhibit A on plan pages six-dash-twenty and seven-dash-four, as detailed in ordinance exhibit A. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in ordinance exhibit B for planning file CP-dash-zero-three-dash-two-four, and findings in support of the decision made by the city council during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, thank you, counselors, legislate, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Do a roll call, please.
Counselor Thompson?
Aye.
Counselor Monague?
Aye.
Counselor McLeod?
Aye.
Counselor Smith?
Aye.
Counselor McGee?
Aye.
Counselor Newton Azor?
Aye.
Ordinance passes.
Thank you, sir. A legislative decision of, with the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice to, of intent to appeal no later, not later than tw- twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Within five working days following the adoptive, adoption of the amendment or new land use regulation, the director shall forward to the Department of Land Use, Land Conservation and Development a copy of the adopted amendment and findings. We will now return to the normal session. Thank you, counselors, thank you, Counselor Thompson, thank you, counselors. Next on tonight's agenda would be a presentation and ceremonies, L B C C C T E, Workforce Development Presentation by Dan Moon and Sophie Adams, it's a verbal presentation.
Good evening.
Look at that.
For those watching, I'm Sophie Adams, I manage the Economic Development Department here at the city. I'm here, I'm really pleased to introduce Dale Moon, who's the Director of Workforce Development for Lynn Benton Community College, one of the cities, your strategic plan goals for a healthy economy is a focus on living wage jobs, training, and education opportunities for Albany residents. We all benefit from a skilled workforce, and the city has a history of supporting workforce development programs, notably, some of you will remember, the use of economic development funds in the past to help build out the facilities needed to provide welding, mechatronics, machine tooling, and non-destructive testing programs at L B C C, and those better meet the needs and goals of our residents and students, and also our local economy. So, I'm really pleased to have Dale here, and turn over the time to him, and he will give an overview of their programs, what they're up to, and talk a little bit about some upcoming events as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for inviting me, I really appreciate it, I was told I get ten minutes, but I could easily spend forty-five to thirty hours on this stuff. Lynn Benton is a fabulous place, we have wonderful programs, and I hope that I can over, I give you a good overview of these, but today, we're just gonna talk about the economic impact of these programs. So, Lynn Benton Community College has these C T E programs, C T E stands for Career and Technical Education, you have those C T E programs at your high schools, and they directly feed into our programs, the programs that you see that have the little asterisks, those are programs that are listed out of eleven, so our healthcare programs, our transportation, heavy equipment, diesel, automotive, electric vehicle technician programs are all located there, the other ones are here on the Albany campus. So, none of those programs exist except for the support of our local industry, if local industry did not want these programs, we would not have them. We have to provide employees for the employers, and so we are constantly talking to them, trying to find out, are we doing the right job, are we creating employees that they're looking for, and, you know, do we need to modify our program, do we need to add new programs to our, to our repertoire? Good case in point, the mechatronics program would not be at the campus right now if it were not for Oregon Freeze Drive, and their need for technicians to keep the lines of their machinery running, so they were a big pusher to get that program running. CPP Corporation was also a big proponent of our non-destructive testing, so. Important to know that most of our graduates tend to stay in this area, they come from all over the place, they come from Montana, Idaho, California, Washington, and when they graduate, some of them go back home, but a lot of them stay in this area, we are developing a local workforce, and so, as we go through this, you'll see welding, we graduated twenty-two graduates last year, I think that's a little low, but that's the official number, students coming out of that program typically make anywhere between eighteen and thirty dollars, it really depends upon the program that they're going into and what job they're gonna be doing, equates to about forty-five thousand dollars a year, that's forty-five thousand dollars in salaries plus benefits that is staying in this community. Within three years, that welder could be easily making over a hundred thousand dollars in overtime if they don't want to have a family life, so. But that opportunity is there for them, and again, these are local jobs, these are local people, they pay their taxes, they buy their goods here, this is what we're providing for these students when they graduate from our programs. Non-destructive testing is an unusual program in that it's one of the only ones on the West Coast, and we had twelve graduates come out of that program last year, again, I believe that's a little bit low, but that's the official line, a student coming out of non-destructive testing can make a starting wage of about sixty thousand a year, that's at CPP Corporation, Selmat, Pacific Cast, I believe there's even a helicopter place over in Carvalis that hires our folks, this one's a little bit more upwardly mobile, they're, they tend to move around a little bit more because some companies pay more than others, and they'll get their foot in the door in one place, and then they'll move someplace else, and we also get a lot of companies coming down from Portland, Bainbridge Island, the Naval Air Station comes down, they recruit our students, and unfortunately, when students find out that they are employable after only one year, they leave and, and they start working, doing great things, we always encourage them to come back, because that's how community colleges get funded, by how many degrees that we impart on students, so if a student leaves early with only one year under their belt, but they're, they've got a job, we seem to think that we've done our job, but the state would say, nah, you didn't graduate them, so that doesn't count. Within two years, an N D T student could be making, again, over a hundred thousand dollars a year, depend upon their, their gumption and how far they want to go with their education, they'll come out as an N D T one, after two years, and, and lots of work experience, they end up with an N D T two degree, and then the N D T three folks are the, are the really high-paying salaries, they're the ones who work with the people who design parts, and they decide how we're gonna test those parts, so. I would add health occupations on this, but they kind of skew my charts a little bit, when our nursing students walk out, out of the program after two years, and they're making about thirty dollars an hour, and basically, they can write their ticket and just go about anywhere they want, so I kind of left health occupations off the list there, so. Ooh, text is small. Businesses are looking to Businesses are looking to locate in our area. This is what they're looking for. They're working for already a trained workforce. They don't want to have to retrain people. They don't want to bring other people in. They're looking for areas that have welders already. They're looking for people who have non-destructive testing. They're looking for folks who can go to work right away. And if they don't have the skills that they want, then they want to be able to get those skills and get those people hired and then get them trained up. So we do some customized training. We do things called contracted training. We will take 12 employees at a time and take them into the welding shop, and we'll teach them how to weld in a chamber. Chamber is where we suck out, I'm paraphrasing, we suck out all the oxygen, throw in an inert gas, and when they start welding on titanium, it doesn't explode. It takes a special skill to do that because you've got heavy gloves on and all sorts of other cool stuff. So we will train employees on how to do that at the request of companies. Some companies want to keep their employees, so they will send them to the college to be retrained. And as a student goes through and gets their degrees, finishes coursework, they get a raise as they go through that. Other companies have approached us saying, hey, we don't want to fold. We want to do something. How can we improve our factories? How can we improve the work that we're doing? We're not experts, but everybody that teaches in the CTE area is a industry professional. They've got probably over 15, 20 years of experience before they come into the college. So they have some ideas of what might happen. Now, on the other hand, we also offer not credit and non-credit classes. So those students who go through and get a two-year degree, those are credit classes. We have lots of classes at night, so if you all want to come in and learn how to weld in a tank, or you want to learn how to do, don't shake your head. No, it's kind of fun. You can learn some things about mechatronics or non-destructive testing. We offer non-credit classes at night for that. So economic impact, pretty big. If we're training our local workforce at the college and they're staying here, I think that's a good thing. It also helps bring in families into the area as well. We have lots of families that come in. We have a breadwinner, but we have a spouse that kind of follows along. They don't have anything to do. They take community college classes. They get skilled up, and now they can go to work as well. Manufacturing Day is coming up. It's next, it's this Friday. It's at the college on the Albany campus. Typically, first Friday of October is National Manufacturing Day. We like to celebrate our manufacturers. We want to thank them for being in our communities, to help support the communities, to help support the work of the cities. So we like to celebrate them. Manufacturing Day this year will be this Friday. We have over 300 high school students from around our region coming in. We have vendors. We have manufacturers. We have all sorts of people putting on hands-on activities. I encourage you and invite you to come and join us there. It'll be from about 9 until noon. And if you stay afternoon, you can have some pizza with the kids. CTE Signing Day is April 17. It's a special day for us. We invite all graduating seniors who are interested in any of these CTE programs to come in and, just like the NCA, sign on the dotted line, I commit, put a cap on, sort of thing. We're celebrating students who decide that they're going to go into the trades, and we celebrate them by guaranteeing them a spot in programs that are hard to get into. There's wait lists in our pipe welding program. If a student wants to go into pipe welding right now, there's a wait list. But if these students come in and they sign on the dotted line, they're guaranteed a spot in the fall. There's wraparound services for these students when they sign on the line. We have people who walk them through the registration process. We help them with getting their materials, their books. We make sure that they're on track to graduate, and we have a pretty darn good success rate. About 97% of the students who do CTE Signing Day do graduate on time, in other words, in two years. So last year, I believe, we almost hit 100 students. This year, I believe, we're shooting for more, so. That is all I have. I told I had 10 minutes, so I kind of went through that rather quick. I'm open for questions if that's appropriate.
Yes, it is. Please, Counselor Monique.
So I'm one of your success stories. I moved here from California, registered to LBCC, and I went through the accounting program, the transfer, got a job through the CWE program, the Cooperative Work Experience Program. Had an internship at a local manufacturer and worked there for 10 years. So I just want to say thank you for all that you're doing. You know, LBCC definitely has a place in my heart because of how I was able to move here to Oregon, which I've always wanted to do, so thank you for that.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. CWE I did not talk about, but it is a program where if you, including the mayor here, your honor, if you wanted to have an intern come in and help you and have them learn about government, we can accommodate that. We've got students who are more than willing to come in for credit. They get credit through the college. It can be either paid or unpaid. It's up to you, and they're your intern. They can do, you can tell them what to do, but they learn all about government. We have partnerships with HP, with Selmat, with CPP, with Pape and Kenworth and John Dear and all sorts of different programs where that helps students pay for the tuition of their programs.
So I had experience when I worked at HP. I was a manager, and I was, we'd built a new fab two, and I took over hiring and recruiting and hiring for that fab for all four shifts. And we had 130 male technicians, and I asked my boss, I said, where are the women technicians? Because in the military, there are women technicians. Coming out of the military, it was hard to find female technicians, and LBCC had the TAP program. And I had an all-female recruiting event, and I hired 13 of the women that graduated from that TAP program. And it was wonderful. And the woman, the person that replaced me when I took another job with Agilent Technologies when they split off was one of those women. So it was great. I love LBCC, and it was something I will always consider a valuable asset to the city.
Perfect.
Thank you. Any other councilor's questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Again, I encourage you to come visit us anytime. My contact information, ask Sophie. She knows how to get ahold of me, so thank you very much.
Thank you much. I would like to have coffee with you, so can you give me my information, or I'll give you my card? All right, I gave you my card. Perfect. Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is Business from the Public. Business from the Public is a time for Albany residents to speak and for the councilors to listen. The council wants to discuss topics or make decisions during Business from the Public, but will take comments and requests under advisement. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must follow the council rules and observe the standards of decorum. If unable to do so, they will be asked to step down and take a seat in the audience for the remainder of the meeting. When you get to the microphone, please give your name and state whether or not you live in the City of Albany, Oregon. And the written comment was supplied to us via email from the county recorder. So do you guys get a chance to read that? Okay, did she hear her speak to us?
She was not. She was just submitting written comment.
Okay, so thank you very much for that. Next is David Steele. So you have three minutes. It was a pleasure meeting you before the meeting started.
Well, good evening. I am not an Albany resident, so I don't know if that disqualifies me.
No, you work here.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is David Steele, and I am the new Executive Director of Albany Helping Hands Homeless Shelter. Albany Helping Hands is a donor-supported facility that has many challenges over the past few years. My plan is to change that image. The shelter is in its 27th year of demonstrating the love of Jesus for people by meeting their basic needs, encouraging faith, and giving hope for a brighter future. We continue to house, feed, and clothe around 100 people every night. As a high-barrier shelter, active drug users are not allowed at our facility, and this provides a safe environment for our shelter guests. Our founder, Pastor Les Bailey, is no longer with us. His vision was to, his vision is what grew from feeding homeless people in the park to the large operation that we have today. And he's been hard to replace, I understand, and it's been a struggle to find a leader who can keep the mission of Albany Helping Hands alive and growing in the midst of a changing and challenging world. So my goal is to bring the shelter guests onto a pathway of independence and help them gain financial stability in an 18-month program to become financially stable and receive the proper mental health help and equip them with basic life skills to return them back into our community as productive citizens. So my goal is to help people up and to equip them, to reintegrate them back into our community. I thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with your community and to bring Albany Helping Hands into a favorable view of the city and our community. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for speaking to us. Next on tonight's agenda is Adoption of the Consent Calendar. Counsel, would you have any, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Does anyone in council like to speak to the city council at this time? Thank you. Adoption of the Consent Calendar, items now six. Counsel, you have any questions or concerns or omissions or changes?
I move we adopt the consent calendar as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Thank you, councilors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Thank you very much, counsel. Next is, onto item seven in the presentation of the council is Award of Contracts/Bids, Award of Contracts for SS 2024-01, 2024 Pipe Bursting Andrew Monaco, pages 214 to 217 of your packet.
I'm going to give a report for Andrew. He was unable to make it this evening. Staff is recommending that council award a contract to KNR Plumbing Construction. This contract is for construction of the 2024 pipe bursting projects. We received four bids ranging from the low bid that KNR Plumbing submitted of $693,500 up to the high bid of approximately $1.1 million. So pipe bursting is one of the trenchless construction technologies that we use to replace our pipes. The trenchless construction's less expensive compared to traditional open trench construction, and it's also less disruptive to the public. Fun fact, well, I don't know if this is fun, but we have over 200 miles of gravity sewer pipe in the city. So the pipes that are going to be replaced with this project, they were identified by our collections staff. They televise, clean, and then they do an assessment methodology to identify pipes that are at risk for failure. And we try to spend money annually to address these pipes to avoid failures and interruption in service.
Counsel, any questions? So you identified the roads. I see that on here, the parts of the city. So it would be minimal disruption to that community?
Yep.
Couple days, week?
They, what they do is with the technology, they set up at a pipe segment, so they'll have the bursting head at one manhole, and they'll pull the HDP pipe through to the other. But we don't have to dig in the street. And so when they get set up, the operation usually just takes a day, so it's really...
One to two days disruption?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Because we're all going to get questions about it. That's why I ask.
Yeah.
Anything else, counsel? Have a motion?
I move that we award the contract in the amount of $693,500 to the lowest bidder, KNR Plumbing Construction Company, Inc. of Clackamas, Oregon 97015.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's, tonight's agenda, item eight is Business from the Council. I'm going to start with Dr. Counselor McGee.
That just made me, my brother calls me Big Sister Doctor Counselor Professor. I have two things. I sent an email to the city managers today, as well as the city attorney and Kenzie and the mayor regarding something that has been on my mind for a little while, interested in starting a youth advisory council. We don't have one here. There are a couple of cities who do. We have CAGs for everything else, but we do not have anything that is specifically targeted to our youth in this community. And I think that it is really important that we get them involved in some shape, form, or fashion, and I think this is one way to do that. And so just put it on the council's mind to think about what that would look like, how we could do it. Peter and I will be meeting soon to talk more in depth about it, and whatever ideas you have, can email me. I know it's always a struggle to get younger folks to do things, but there are people, young people in this community who really want to be involved, and I think that we should give them an opportunity to do that and acknowledge them in that way.
And the contest has been great for that.
Yeah. So that's the first thing. The second thing is, a couple of meetings ago, Counselor McLeod was very passionate about having funding for our arts commission, and I suggested in that same meeting that we have our CAGs come in and do some sort of report about what they're looking for, what they've been up to, and things of that nature. I brought it up. We haven't brought it up again, so I wanted to put that back out there. And I know that, I was told that staff would need direction on how we would proceed for something like that. I'm not exactly sure how it was set up with the Transportation Advisory Committee, but whatever, however that went, whether that is getting a common date that they can come in and present, not each month, but, you know, you can schedule them accordingly so that we know the progress and things that they need, if they need funding, if the projects that they're working on, how they're getting membership, how the meeting's going, et cetera. I think it would be really beneficial for us to hear from our CAGs in a more formal setting, perhaps in a council meeting.
And now I will go. Thank you so much, counselor. Counselor Marilyn Smith?
Thank you. I wanted to mention a couple of things that I forgot to mention earlier. On February 12, I attended one of the noon hour history lessons that the Albany Regional Museum does. This one was called, the series is called History Bites because they have cookies. And this one was called Albany's Mayors, and it was really interesting. Retired Judge Dan Murphy was the presenter, and he spoke about each of Albany's mayors from the very first one in 1865 and explained why Albany didn't have a mayor before then. There wasn't anything for the mayor to do until life got complicated and the city became bigger. And there was a marshal who took care of the necessary things. But he went all the way through all of them, said what they had done for a living, how long they'd served, told interesting tidbits about some of them, notable moments in their lives, and a father and a son who had been mayor at one time, or different times, and so on. Very interesting, big turnout for that. I had never been to one of those presentations before, so I would encourage you, if you're looking for something to do on Wednesday, at noon in the middle of the month, they promote their programs online. The other thing that I participated in as a fly on the wall, last Tuesday, I was invited to attend the Situation Table Meeting at APD to get an idea of what that's like, who's attending, what they talk about. This was the, Peter wrote about this some time ago in his Friday message, and it's the latest way of directly addressing people who have issues with homelessness, mental health challenges, people who come to the attention of people who are in charge of public services a lot, and they're without easy, obvious solutions at the time. It was, it started in Scotland. It came to Canada. It's moved out this direction. There is another Situation Table. Marshal, if I screw something up, would you help me? Doing okay so far? Doing okay so far? Thank you. They, anyway, it involves everybody who's involved in caring for people who need mental health care, health care in general, housing, you name it. The room was full, probably 15 people, including David was there. All the discussions are anonymous. People, the clients are assigned numbers, and the discussion is, it's very well, very strictly scripted as to the topics that can be covered, what happens with each person if they're, it was, it was really impressive. We've tried different things like this in the past informally, getting the same types of people in the room. And this is, the structure of this and the training that's involved to get people to work together is really, it's really good. The Kirsten Glazer, our mental health specialist at APD, is the chair, ably assisted by Hillary Kosmicki, our community paramedic. And I appreciate the invitation from the Police Department and very much appreciate what they're doing because people are getting help.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And when's the next one?
They're, they meet every Tuesday.
Every Tuesday? What time?
One o'clock. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to attend one. Thank you very much for that. Next is Counsel McLeod.
Yes, I have three things. I spoke with two additional residents regarding the Timberland right-of-way. Both were in favor of vacating it. Second item is, as Counselor McGee indicated Monday, she received a phone call from Congresswoman Janelle Bynum. I also received a phone call from her wanting to keep in contact with our city leaders and ask about constituents' concerns. And also, third, this morning, I observed the Mental Health Court as we were invited from a previous meeting. I saw newcomers get started with the program, and I witnessed others graduate the program. Those who graduated expressed their gratitude and appreciation for the Mental Health Court, allowing them the opportunity to get mental health treatment and have their records cleared. I thought it was a great program, and I really appreciate the work that, that those individuals put into bettering themselves. So it was a great opportunity to observe that. That's all. That was three.
Okay, I missed one. Must have missed one. Okay. And next is Counsel Monagoo.
Yeah, I want to appreciate Dr. Counselor's, McGee's comments about the CAGs. What I'd suggest is at least yearly, we should be able to hear from them. Also about the public art. One of the suggested changes I had for the Comprehensive Plan was to add some, some language around, in our aesthetics and urban design section about wanting to implement public art and how that would be important. But anyway, I think that will be important for us to do when we do our, you know, changes later. The other thing, I think that's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Thompson.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I just want to remind everyone, I believe March 6th, next Thursday, 6 o'clock at the Riverview Center. Is that what it's called now?
Rear Front.
Rear Front.
Community Center.
Community Center. Yes, correct. The city's holding kind of a town hall specifically, I guess we'd talk about anything, but specifically 205 Madison property. So especially folks in that area, please come and give your thoughts. And, you know, this is just a question, I think, for the city manager or all of you. We have on our dais a letter from a Carrie Bennett, and it goes, it's a lengthy letter. She's making a request from an ambulance ride she had, or I think she had, one of her family members did. And through a series of understandable missteps and whatnot, a $3,100 ambulance ride has now become a $4,300 in collections. And I've never seen this before, but I'm just wondering, can counsel, I would be in favor of reducing that to the original 3,100, 3,104. Can, can we do that?
With the fire, we got the letter today, so--
Okay.
And a first call to the fire department. I understand that they, they will always work with people to try to work out a payment plan. Unfortunately, with this one, this was in October, and when they reached out to try to work out such a plan, there was no response at the time. So it's gone to collections.
I think she deletes, I think she goes into detail about that, yeah.
Yeah, so it's gone to collections. And the thing that I also understand, and that's a difficult thing to accept, is that once it goes to collections, it's, it's out of our control. But if you give me some time to look a little bit further into that, I'll find out if that's actually the case.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, counselor. Yes. Go for it. Go for it.
I was going to say, I noticed that a local blogger has got very, a lot of people very excited about our street funding conversation we had on Monday. And I just would like to invite all of those people that got very excited online about it to review our street, the streets page that we have on our city website. It has a lot of really great information about all the things we're talking about so that those who are very passionate about this conversation can get the information they need to form an informed opinion. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Counsel Nuzar.
Thank you. So I actually had a few questions about roads. So I got a call from someone that was like, hey, this is yesterday. And they were like, hey, do you want to take a paid survey? And I was like, what? And they were like, it's with the City of Albany. And I was like, ooh, I don't think I qualify, but tell me more. And, right, so they're paying $100. But from what I hear, it's like, so I asked the person, he was super friendly, his name was Jason. He didn't really know too much because he was just paid by the consultants, it seems. It's just two groups of 12 people. Are we going to be doing more? I'd like to know more about how information is being gathered, and I also would like to know more about, so we got, we got everything presented to us on Monday. Personally, I'd like to see the presentations in our packet so I can read and digest things so I'm ready with more, more questions. That's just my method of thinking. But also I want to know, kind of the handoff. I know we have something with the, with the Public Safety Levy coming up that's in action right now, but then also with this gas tax. Where are, what is a consultant doing for, I know they're doing something with information gathering, but then where will it go from there when it goes to like the campaign? So I just, I want to know more.
Kenzie, there we go. Focus groups are intended to be small so that the discussion can be focused. That's the point of a focus group. So there's, they're small numbers, and they have, they're guided by the consultant group, and they do this for a living. They're very well-regarded. This is the same team that was helpful in the City of Portland getting their gas tax information out to the voters that was approved and reapproved. So they're very good at what they do, and we're excited to be working with them. Then the next thing will be the telephone survey. And Counselor McGee, one thing, I almost came up and answered your question on Monday. I think that you are specifically excluded because, all of you, because you participated in, well, last time you all were, should have been contacted by the consultants, but also you're not going to be, they want people who are--
Know nothing.
Not as informed as you are. You all are going to skew potentially their results. So they, they want a more John and Jane Doe of the public is what our understanding is. So the, we did contact them about their methodology. They will be providing all of that information when they come to talk to you about how they go about selecting the participants. It is intended to grab a demographically representative sample of the city based on voter rolls, likely voters. So they choose people who have voted in X of the last Y elections, however they do that. This is not our area of expertise, that's why we've hired the consultants. What I think is going to happen is they will go out and they're going to do the focus groups, they're going to do the survey, and then they're going to develop, based on what they hear this time, what they heard last time, which is a slightly different type of question that they're asking, then we will end up with educational materials and guidance from them that addresses concerns that they hear from the public, misconceptions, lack of information about whatever part of this street funding and street maintenance program that we're trying to work on. And, you know, so there'll be some general knowledge, and then it's going to be specifically tailored to what they're hearing. People are concerned about these things, so let's talk about those things. Or there's a misconception that property taxes are paying for street maintenance, for instance, so we need to specifically address that. So the education and outreach materials will be developed in part based on what they hear from these groups. What I think is going to happen is then they'll be presenting to you, we'll be presenting to you, and in June and early July will be sort of a critical decision point. If you want to direct staff to develop a ballot title for a local fuel tax in the November election, that decision will have to be made in July. And so the goal is, by then, we will have given you, and they will have given you enough information that you can decide if you think that now is the time to do that or not. And so if you say yes, then that will go on to the November ballot. And at that point, we're sort of in the same place as the Public Safety Levy, where staff sort of has to stop doing as much outreach. On the fuel tax, we're trying to figure out if there's still a way for us to do outreach on the street maintenance fee and general street maintenance questions that won't run us afoul of the rules of the gas tax with the election, with the Secretary of State. So, but you can say, now is not the time. We want to wait until a later election, or we don't want to do this at all. You know, at that point, there will be some decisions that will have to be made. In the meantime, Deb Gialardi and her group are working to develop the mechanism of the proposed street maintenance utility charge. And for those of you that went through this with the city services fee or the stormwater fee, there's lots of questions, and it can be, she'll show this little graphic, it can be simple to complex. Complex is more equitable maybe, but it also costs a whole lot more because they're harder to administer. You have to update your data regularly. It's just a more costly way of doing it, and there's everything in between. And various cities do it various ways. It's like a buffet. You'll just get to pick how you want it done, and you'll get to tell us how to structure the fee. The proposed fee won't be ready to be really nailed down to a dollar per month for residential customers until after the time of the election. It's just going to take that long. So by then, we'll know more. If there is a local fuel tax, and if it passes, you'll have that set of circumstances to inform the street maintenance utility. If there is not a local fee, then you'll have that set of circumstances. If there is a local fuel tax on the ballot and it fails, then you'll have that set of circumstances, and we'll be back to discuss all of that with you. So it's sort of, because we're trying to walk and chew gum at the same time, it's complicated. It's not as straightforward as if we were just pursuing one funding mechanism. So all of these decisions sort of bounce off each other, and will need to be considered as we go forward. But that, I hope that that provides some clarity as sort of how we see this process playing out, is gathering information, giving information back to the larger community as much as we can, bringing that information to the council, having the council make some decisions, and then going back and then, based on what happens with the voters, if there's a fuel tax, then we'll come back and we'll have more decisions, and then we'll back and forth, back and forth, until we either find a solution that the council is happy with, or you tell us to stop, in which case we'll stop and we'll move on to something else. So I'm happy to answer any other questions, and we'll get the concert people to come and talk about their methodology as soon as we can.
As much information as we can get ahead of time. I love reading the presentations and just digesting things--
Okay.
--beforehand.
Sure.
Then I feel like I'm better prepared with more questions and more thought. It's just, that would be really appreciated.
Yeah, as much as we can, we'll try to do that, for sure.
Thank you.
Sure. The other street--
That's all I have for today.
Excellent. So I guess it's me now. I got 30 things to talk about, but I'm going to talk about Saturday. The If For Where Mayor Contest ends, although it lasts, entries should be in by Friday. What time, Matthew? Five? Friday at 5:00. Please have your students or your grandkids or whomever's participating get that into the city. We do have a semi-pro basketball team that's set up shop here, the Willamette Valley Jaguars. They're actually practicing at the Y. They'll be playing this year's games at LBCC, no, excuse me, at Crescent Valley High School and Carraway High School. And they have some away games, but they have 10 games here in town. And I went to their first practices, and these are 6'11", 7-foot, fast, phenomenal basketball players. And they're trying to get a leg up into higher leagues as well. And they also have to do several hours of volunteer time to be in the community they're in. And so if you have people that are looking for volunteers for projects, for organizations, please let me know, and I'll get your contact information and get it over to them. So already connect them with the Carousel Downtown Association, that, things like that. I have been here 30 years and a few months, and I actually went inside the Montith House Museum for the first time. And it was amazing. I walked back in time, and the young lady of the docent there, I was amazed by the history. Abraham's Lincoln, Lincoln's name on the signature, actually on the document. It was, it was wonderful. So download the Albany Explorer app, and there's a mayor's message. I actually did the welcome message from the Montith porch, and it was pretty special to be exposed to that for the first time. So I'm taking my grandkids there, my wife there. So please visit the Montith House. Water Day is coming at the Capitol on March 19th. I do plan to go in support of the upcoming drawdown of water infrastructure. It's really important. This city would not be what it is or what it can be without clean drinking water and toilets that flush. So if you would like to join me, I'll find out what, what the people are talking about, and then I'm going to go up to the Capitol and testify if they allow me to do so, March 19th. And I'll send out the Times. And then Counsel McGee, whatever you need from me to get this Yak started, you got it. Because the If For Where Mayor Contest, these kids are participating, and they're getting involved, they're asking questions. I still get questions from the last year's winner, and she's at the University of Idaho, and she actually went to city council meetings over there and witnessed how they do it. And so she's really actively involved with paying attention to what we're doing. And the survey, so that survey was interesting, Director Bailey. I have several hundred clients in the City of Albany, and three of them brought their documents to me saying, is this real? Is this, is this a scam? Because they're used, a lot of my clients are used to being scammed or tricked into certain things like this. So I'm really glad that I can go back and tell them, yes, it's real, we've talked about it last night at city council, but they're waiting to hear from me whether or not they should go to their appointment. So thank you for that. And with that, I will then turn it over to our city manager for his report. And with that, I will then turn it over to our city manager for his report.
Thanks, Mayor. Okay, first of all, the citizen advisory groups' updates to the council. What I think I hear the council saying is they'd like to hear from them on a periodic basis. There are 17 citizen advisory groups. As you can imagine, you probably don't want to hear from all of them, or it, it's, it's, you're going to have, for instance, you're going to have a planning commission, joint meeting with the planning commission coming up, so it's probably not necessary to hear from them. So we'll have to be somewhat selective about doing that. There's probably 13 of the 17 which could give updates, but of course, you can imagine that kind of depends upon what's happening in each of their, the course of the events that they're, and their issues that they're dealing with. So if, if what I'm taking from you is that we will start to try to arrange updates, may, in some cases, it may be yearly, in some cases, maybe a little bit less, and you could even envision that occasionally it might be more frequent than that, but we'll get back to you on that. The right-of-way vacation, I, I just want to remind counselors and the community that the community members can apply for a right-of-way vacation at any time, and for any part or all three parts of that right-of-way. And when the community, when a community member or members apply for it, what that does is guarantee that all interested homeowners in the area will be able to comment on that vacation, proposed vacation. All they have to do is come down and fill out paperwork at the community development counter. And then lastly, one more plug for Library Uncorked on Saturday evening. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
With that, our next meeting is Monday, March 3rd, 2025, at 5:15 for a joint planning commission meeting with the city council. It's a work session, Monday, March 10th, 4 p.m. work session, and Wednesday, March 12th, 2025, has been canceled. And with that, I will now adjourn the meeting, and thank you all for being here tonight.